I call this meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission to order. Today is January 24th, 2022. Before we start, our secretary could not be present tonight, so we need one of the three commissioners present to take that role for this meeting, which just means signing documents electronically after the meeting. Do we have volunteer for that?
Commissioner Knealy.
Thank you, Commissioner Knealy. All right, next we have approval of the planning commission minutes of our meeting in December 13th, 2021. I'll make a motion to approve their second.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Rosenberg seconds. Any discussion?
This is Chair Kwam. I'm not going to move to amend them, but I just would like to point out that for going forward, I'm trying to get a little more thorough representation if there's a commissioner position that is against, is not advancing the staff recommendation. If we could get a little more detail in our minutes, such as Commissioner Penn, Rudolph, and Kwam all thought the project was too big, something like that, but it's already been voted on by council, so I'm just gonna ask and maybe saying, could the minutes reflect or something going forward? So pointing that out, and I'm talking to council a little about it, too.
All right, tonight we have many opportunities for the public to call into our meeting, and the number for them is the same. So I'll repeat that now and a couple times in the meeting. It is 612-861-0651. All instructions for participating, or how to call in, or write in, or email in, are on the planning commission's agendas and minutes page. So first, we have open forum, which is an opportunity for the public to address the planning commission on items not on our agenda. To share during the meeting, call or write ahead of time before 2:00 p.m. on the day of the meeting. Look for those instructions online, or you can call in right now at that number, 612-861-0651. We love to hear from the public. So are there, were there any staff, were there any emails or voicemails ahead of time for us for public, I mean, for open forum?
Kwam, there are not.
Okay, thank you. Are there any callers on the line for open forum?
There are not. Perhaps while you're waiting, you would want to vote on the minutes.
Sure.
Would you like me to take the call?
Yes, we've had a motion and a second, so any other discussion on the minutes from December 13th? Okay, Nellie, would you take roll call?
I'll be doing that tonight, Chair Kwam.
Okay. Aye.
Commissioner Knealy?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you, and I guess we should take role of our attendance, too. Is that right?
Yep. Chair Kwam?
Yep, staff, could you take role for attendance?
Here.
Kwam? Here.
Commissioner Knealy?
Here.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Here.
Commissioner Sturza?
Here.
All right, thank you. So we have four commissioners, so we do have a quorum, but nobody can leave. So open forum, any callers holding to talk to us on open forum?
Chair Kwam, there are not.
All right, thank you. So we'll close open forum, but it's available every month to the public. So that brings us to approval of the agenda for tonight. I move to approve the agenda. This is Chair Kwam. Is there a second?
Seconded by Commissioner Knealy.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Melissa, would you take role?
Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner Knealy?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. So commissioners, when you raise your hand, if you'd also say chair, just in case you're off screen and I don't see you, that would be helpful. I see all of you right now, but you're not all, everyone present is not fitting on the screen, but if you just raise your hand, say chair, that would be helpful. Okay, so that brings us to our, we have four public hearings, as I said. The number to call in for any of them is the same, 612-861-0651. Our first public hearing is to consider an ordinance amendment establishing regulations for electric vehicle chargers. Staff, would you read your report?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Sorry, technical difficulties. All right, transportation accounts for 29% of U.S. greenhouse gas emissions, which is the largest share of emissions categories, according to the U.S. EPA. Electric vehicles and electric vehicle charging infrastructure are both needed throughout the U.S. to reduce these emissions. According to the Great Plains Institute, in order to boost EV sales to 10% of the market share of all cars in the Twin Cities metro, we will need to install 9,000 to 16,000 chargers. And as of June 2019, there were only about 500 charging units in the entire metro area. Additionally, since global EV sales jumped from 450,000 in 2015 to 2.1 million in 2019, we will need to fill a growing demand for chargers. EV sales are projected to increase while battery prices decrease and more models become available, and that's according to the Minnesota Department of Transportation. So in light of emissions and market trends, this proposed ordinance amendment establishes general standards for EV charger infrastructure in the city of Richfield, as well as minimum charger numbers that must be installed for new developments and for certain redevelopments that are required to bring the property into compliance based on subsection 544.01. Staff researched best practices for the proposed ordinance and aligned the proposed requirements with neighboring cities like St. Louis Park, Bloomington, and Minneapolis. More cities in the metro area are expected to add EV charging standards to their city codes in the coming years as well. In 2018, 28 cities worked together across Minnesota to explore EV readiness as part of the Cities Charging Ahead Program, which was led by the Great Plains Institute and Clean Energy Resource Teams. And many of those cities have already implemented EV infrastructure into their policies and/or their practices. And I will note that the city of Richfield does have an electric vehicle charger at City Hall. Richfield's proposed EV ordinance includes a requirement for multifamily and non-residential uses to install EV chargers in some parking spaces and to have other spaces made EV-ready, i.e. conduit installed to support future installation of a charging unit. EV chargers come in three styles. Level 1, L1, is considered slow charging. The voltage level for L1 chargers is between 0 and 120, and chargers can use a standard household outlet. L1 chargers usually start at around 200 for basic models. They can get more expensive, but I did a search the other day, and it was 200. L2, Level 2 chargers, are considered medium-speed charging. The voltage level for L2 chargers is between 120 and 240. L2 chargers can cost between $400 and $2,000 depending on the features. Level 3, L3, charging is considered fast or rapid. The voltage for L3 chargers, and they're sometimes called DC chargers, is greater than 240. L3 chargers are the most expensive and usually cost around $10,000, but they can be up to $40,000 for super-fast charging styles that I think are just coming on the market. A summary of the proposed EV charger requirements is below. So residential uses with up to three units. One L1 charger is required in an enclosed parking space. Residential uses with four to 14 units. 10% of enclosed parking spaces require L1 chargers. And two spaces require L2 or L3 EV-ready spaces, so just the conduit. Residential uses with 15 or more units. 10% of enclosed parking spaces require L2 chargers. 20% of spaces require L2 or L3 EV-ready spaces, so just conduit. And all remaining enclosed spaces require to be L1-ready. At least one ADA space must have access to an EV charger. For non-residential uses with up to 20 spaces, one space with an L2 or L3 charger and 10% require L2 or L3 EV-ready spaces. And then for non-residential uses with 21 or more off-street parking spaces, 5% of spaces need an L2 or L3 charger, and 20% of spaces require L2 EV-ready. At least one L3 EV-ready space is required, and at least one ADA space must have access to an EV charger. The draft ordinance also adds EV chargers as a permitted accessory use in all zoning districts and allows a 5% reduction of minimum parking requirements for the installation of EV chargers above and beyond the minimum requirements at a ratio of one L2 or L3 charger to one parking spot. This reduction may be used instead of, but not in addition to, the bicycle parking reduction, which is also 5%. New off-street parking areas will need to comply with the EV charger requirements, and if an existing parking area is physically expanded, any added parking spaces will need to meet ratios for minimum electric vehicle charging requirements as well. The recommended action, conduct and close a public hearing, and by motion, recommend approval of an ordinance amendment establishing regulations for electric vehicle chargers. And I will note that the attached ordinance amendment has been reviewed by the city attorneys, and they made a few changes to the wording and the length of it, but not to any of the proposed policies. But just so you know, that the updated ordinance amendment will go to city council. And staff can stand for any questions.
Thank you. So commissioners, do you have any questions right now before we open the public hearing? And then we'll have a chance to ask questions after the public hearing, too. Remember to say Chair Kwam if I can't see you. Okay. No questions. So, okay, well, I will, what we do is open the public hearing. You can call in and share your thoughts with us at 612-861-0651. So the public hearing is now open. Did we have any advance emails or voicemails on this public hearing, staff?
Chair Kwam, we did not.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any callers holding?
Chair Kwam, there are no callers.
Okay. Well, I guess, I don't know if we should, let's just wait a couple, wait a minute, 612-861-0651. Just wait a minute, and then we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Commissioner Rosenberg moves, and Chair Kwam will second, closing the public hearing. Any discussion? Melissa, would you please take role?
Yes, Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner Knealy?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
The motion passes.
All right, so the public hearing's closed. So commissioners, any questions or discussion at this time before we make a motion? Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yeah, I just want to say that the League of Women Voters had a, had a meeting in November about electric cars, and it was quite popular, and it was really a pretty good discussion from the speaker and also from the participants in regards to, this is something that's up and coming, and I think it's gonna be, it may be only 10% of the cars being sold today, but I think it's gonna be much more. And so I'm supporting this because I do think that it's something that is happening, and we should make this available to residents and for our public.
Any other, Commissioner Sturza?
I would echo those comments. I really appreciate the background that staff provided and the research. I appreciate that these are in line with what St. Louis Park, Bloomington, and Minneapolis are doing. I think that Richfield should be doing what our neighbors are doing in this space. I'm excited to see where this goes and how it evolves, but I wholeheartedly support that.
Chair Kwam?
Yeah, Commissioner Knealy?
Nothing important to add, but I just want to echo what my fellow commissioners are saying. I've learned a lot about electric vehicle chargers through this process, and I'm excited that Richfield is taking the steps there.
This is Chair Kwam. I have a question. I'm generally in favor of it, too. It sounds like a great way that we're moving. How do you decide how many Level 1, 2, and 3? I mean, how do you calculate? That must be very hard to predict what people will want and can afford.
Chair Kwam, we did talk to one developer who I think installed chargers in Washington State, and they did roughly the same amount, and they quoted us, you know, how much it cost them, and it was a few thousand per charger. And there's a few cities, I think, in Washington that do require this now as well. But mostly, we just looked at similar cities. The Great Plains Institute does have a best practices manual, which is available online. And that was really interesting to read, and they, they recommended similar percentages, and they had a lot of cost information as well. So it's, it's mostly just current trends. These numbers are pretty consistent.
Thank you. All right, would anyone like to make a motion? And then we can discuss or ask questions further if we want. There's only four commissioners, so you're gonna have to do a lot of moving and seconding this meeting. Commissioner Sturza?
I move the recommended ordinance amendment establishing the regulation of electronic vehicle chargers.
Chair Kwam, seconds?
Oh, okay.
Any discussion? Okay, Melissa, would you take role, please?
Yes, Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner Knealy?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. All right, that's our first public hearings. We're on to our second public hearing, which is to consider a request for a conditional use permit to allow a Class 1 full or full-service restaurant and retail market at 2966 Street West, also known as Southdale Square. Staff, would you read your report?
Chair Kwam, planning commissioners, the request before you tonight was submitted by Cruise Market, and that again is a proposal for a retail market and restaurant/cafe, which would serve alcohol, and that would propose to be located in the multi-tenant shopping center known as Southdale Square. That site's address is 2966 Street West, and it is currently zoned C2 general business. Full-service restaurants, or those that serve alcohol, are conditionally permitted use in the C2 district. The applicant is proposing to occupy roughly 2,300 square feet of the property in space that was formerly occupied by Pier 1 Imports. The balance of the Pier 1 Imports is currently occupied by the Fosse Swimming School. The proposed use meets the sole required condition of the C2 district for full-service restaurants in that the site abuts an arterial roadway. No building additions are proposed, and the entire shopping center would continue to meet the minimum number of required parking stalls after accounting for the proposed use. Staff finds that the use would comply with the eight findings necessary to approve a conditional use permit, mainly that the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It wouldn't adversely affect properties in the vicinity, nor would it affect public services, and that the use does not pose a threat to public health, safety, or welfare. So following a public hearing, the planning commission is asked to provide a recommendation to the city council on the requested conditional use permit. The applicant's architect is available for any questions, and staff can stand for any questions that you have at this time.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? All right. So then I will open the public hearing. The number to call in about this item is the same, 612-861-0651. And you'll be given some brief instructions, and so they'll tell you everything you need to know if you call in. Were there any emails or voicemails prior to the meeting, staff?
Chair Kwam, there are not.
Okay. Are there any callers on hold, staff?
Chair Kwam, there are no callers.
All right. Well, again, let's wait a moment. 612-861-0651. All right, seeing as we have no callers, would anyone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Okay, Melissa, could you please take role again?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner Knealy?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there an applicant here to say anything, or?
Chair Kwam, the applicant's architect is available for any questions. I don't know if he wanted to add anything.
Did you want to add anything right before we discuss?
I think Ryan presented it really, really well. Appreciate having me here, and I'm here to answer any questions as needed, for sure.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, time for discussion or questions before we make a motion. Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yeah, I was just wondering, is this gonna be affiliated with the swim school? Or is that, is it a part of the same company? Or is it gonna be a totally separate business?
Commissioner Rosenberg, this is a separate business, although I'm sure some parents might want to stop by on their way out to grab something, coffee, or there's a retail component, too, which I believe there's groceries and whatnot. So, yeah, I'd imagine they would synergistically work, but they are separate businesses.
Okay, okay. And it's gonna be a full-service? Or is it just like a grab-and-go type of sandwiches, or it'll be seating?
It's more like a grab-and-go situation. There will be some seating, and there's a patio already outside the tenant space that will have some exterior seating as well, when the weather permits, of course. And there will be a coffee element, and as Ryan presented, there will be an alcohol component as well with some, some small food items throughout the day. But just wine and beer would be the alcohol portion of this.
So it'll be similar than the Patrick's type of thing? Patrick's is more of a bakery, I know.
Yeah.
Have the meal and sit down, okay. Just another option that's going to be there, okay.
Yeah, definitely more of a retail component than Patrick's, but the cafe aspect and bakery aspect would be similar, yes.
All right.
This is Chair Kwam. It seems like a really good spot for it, to me. I mean, I drove around there, I mean, it just seems like a great spot for something like that. And Ryan, could you remind me what happens with the CUP? Like, if there's a different tenant?
So they would, conditional use permits are transferable. So if another Class 1 restaurant would intend to occupy the space, then that transfers as long as that use doesn't cease for a period of a year.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions, comments, or someone want to make a motion?
I will move and recommend approval of a conditional use permit to allow a Class 1 restaurant and retail market at 2966 Street West Suite, 2900 Southdale Square.
Second?
Commissioners?
We're gonna have to fight over it.
Okay, Commissioner Knealy, seconds. Any discussion on the motion? It might be helpful if, remember to say who you are when you're speaking, just so kind of the public knows, too, who we are if our name isn't up. All right, if there's no discussion, then Melissa, would you take role?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner Knealy?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
The motion passes.
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming, Mr. Corcoran, and good luck with the project.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, that's the end of that public hearing. So our next public hearing is to consider a request for an amended planned unit development, final development plan and conditional use permit to allow construction of a building addition to an elementary school at 6,500 Nicollet Avenue South. Staff, would you read your report?
Yes, Chair Kwam, thank you. Partnership Academy established a pre-K through 8th grade school at the northeast corner of the Hub Shopping Center in 2018. The school is proposing a 5,962-square-foot expansion on the north side of the building. The expanded area will house four additional classrooms, an administrative office, student support spaces, and additional restrooms. This addition would be built on an area of the property that is currently used for parking, removing 16 parking stalls as a result. The property would have a total of 37 parking stalls if the expansion is approved. The applicant indicates that constructing this expansion above the existing building would be cost prohibitive for the school. The applicant has a one-year lease agreement with the owner of the hub for 60 leased parking spaces in addition to 37 spaces that would be available on site. Although Richfield zoning code requires shared parking facilities to be protected by covenants that run with the land, and that's subsection 544.13 subdivision 11, staff have previously accepted a parking lease agreement with the hub to fulfill their required parking minimums for the site. The proposed reduction of parking on the site and the prospects for future redevelopment of the hub is cause for reassessment of this exception. Enrollment is planned to total 550 students with 99 staff on site. Required parking for schools is equal to the total number of staff members plus eight spaces for visitors. Accounting for both the 5% bicycle parking reduction and the 10% transit reduction, and this is, requires an additional 20 bike spaces totaling 75 bike spaces, and the transit reduction is already met with proximity to frequent transit routes, a total of 92 spaces is required for this site. Should the lease with the hub be terminated for redevelopment or any other reasons, the applicant would plan to secure additional parking at an adjacent site or build additional parking on site. However, the future is not always predictable, and approving this PUD amendment without adequate onsite parking or the provision of a covenant may result in a parcel that does not have enough parking available in the long term. Staff finds that the policy decision on this parking issue is the primary consideration in reviewing this proposal. As this is a PUD, flexibility for this site may be granted in exchange for high-quality design that fits into the neighborhood. Since this matter is a policy decision, staff is not making a recommendation for approval or denial. If the planning commission is willing to recommend approval of the PUD without meeting the requirement for a covenant-secured, long-term parking arrangement, staff has drafted a resolution that contains suggested conditions of approval should the planning condition recommend it. Following a public hearing, the planning commission is asked to provide a recommendation to the city council on the requested PUD amendment. And representatives from And representatives from Partnership Academy are in attendance tonight, and staff can answer any questions.
Thank you, staff. Ms. Hendricks, did you want to say anything right off the bat?
Susan Rosenberg. Yeah, I just have a question. What, where's the clinic that's right alongside? Where are they in all of this? Are they, are they going to have to give up some of their parking, or is theirs protected? I didn't see anything about their, anything about them in any of the material. Maybe I missed it, but are they agreeable to this, or has their issues even been addressed, or do they even have any?
Commissioner Rosenberg, I, oh, sorry.
Oh, I didn't know.
Oh, I didn't know if it was directed at staff or at the applicant.
Yeah, will staff be fine, or are the are the representative from the school? I don't care. I just, just a general question. I'm throwing it out there.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything, so maybe the applicant wanted to answer that anyway.
Thank you. Thanks, Commissioner Rosenberg. So with the medical building, they're still there. And the way that their parking is situated right now is they also have a a lease with Bricksmore for parking spaces. And we have a lease as well, and so we work with them to kind of rearrange some of the parking spots that are in the area that are more convenient for them, and then there's a section that's more convenient for us, and so we've kind of worked that out with a medical group since we've been there at the site. The proposed addition would be kind of on our area where PA staff and families typically park. And so with this, they wouldn't necessarily be losing the agreed-upon spots that we had agreed on, although during construction, there may be some reconfiguring that needs to happen.
Yeah. Okay, that's all right now, but.
Do we know if there's a representative from that medical group here? Maybe they'll call in on the public hearing, but there's not one on the meeting already, right, staff?
No.
Okay, thanks. Anything else you wanted to add right now, Ms. Hendricks?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions from commissioners before we open the public hearing? Commissioner Keneely?
Thank you, Chair. My question was for the school staff. Just if they have any data or information about how staff arrive at school, is it mostly by car? Is it be it mass transit, bicycle, anything?
I think it's mostly Commissioner Keneely, is it? Keneely? Yes, Commissioner Keneely, thank you. Mostly by car. We do have some folks that are carpooling or taking public transit, so I would say probably about 85% to 90% of our staff do drive in. I know Jake, if you'd agree with that, or he's our operations guy, so. Stay out of it. Anything you want to add there? Or contradict? Can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
That's better, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I had my headphones plugged in. You don't want to hear my two-year-old screaming in the background? Yeah, that is, that's right, Lisa. I would say that I know of, there's 10 staff members, roughly 10%, who are either carpooling or taking public transit into the school.
We lost him.
I can't hear you, Mr. Kazuski.
He said about 10 staff members, so about 10%, about 10%.
10 staff members, what, ride bike?
Yeah, or they carpool, ride bike, or public transit.
Okay. Thank you both.
Other questions from commissioners right now?
Susan Rosenberg. Just some more information about your relationship with the hub. Now, I understand that you are renting spaces from them now. And is this, is this contract or this lease, is this, is this ongoing, or is there an end to it, or how does that, how does that relation work?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Rosenberg. It's been a positive relationship that we've had with Bricksmore since we moved in. We've, of course, would love a longer-term lease, but they have just given us one-year leases, and so we've renewed them ever since we built the facility in 2019. And so we also just renewed our lease with them to increase the amount of parking spaces from, I think it was 30, or maybe 25, 30 up to 60 now. So we have in our lease starting February 1st through February 1st of 2023 enough spaces for the project. So the relationship has been, has been going well and is fine, but we know that they do have future plans down the road, although no definitive date about redevelopment. You know, there are those plans, and so, but it has worked out really well for us in the meantime, and it's been a good solution for the school.
Well, what would be your plans if the hub decides to completely redevelop? I mean, and, you know, and they need those, that space, then what would you do?
So I think there's a couple of different things that our team has talked about. And I think first would be to look at other parking options at adjacent property near us, if we could get another lease similar as such. I also know that, you know, the the Richfield Medical Group, that building has been up for sale, and we were interested in that building and talking with them. We actually began some initial negotiations with them because that was our preferred option originally, but they were going to lease a space in a different location before they would sell and move, and that just hasn't happened yet. And so we had to move forward with an additional plan. And so if that building continues to stay on the market, I think that would be something that we would be interested in down the road as well. Additionally, we, it's definitely not our first choice, and we'd much rather spend the money on students and kids, but there's an option for structured parking that could be on our current site that would allow us to meet the parking requirements. And so that, I think, was included in the packet of materials, just an initial sketch of that. And so, again, it's not our preferred option because it does come with a cost, but it is something that we have discussed and, you know, we understand what our parking obligations are under this, and so we really wanted to have a couple of different options. I don't know if Sean from Ten Square, our team, or Jake, or any of the other guys would want to add to some of the solutions we've come up with, but those are some of the main ones.
I'll just, this is Sean Eller with Ten Square, we're the management manager and partner for the school. I'll just reiterate that the option of structured parking, we've looked at a few different scenarios and provided conceptual images of that in the packet, and even got cost estimates that we've discussed with the school to understand should that event happen, and the school's commitment to meeting those parking obligations results in a structured parking, that we as a team understand what that cost would be, we understand the annual additional debt service the school would have, and their understanding of how to budget for that, should that arise. And then in addition to that, we've worked with the current underwriters and understanding of our bond covenants that would allow for that additional indebtedness for that structured parking is actually included in the bond covenants for this transaction as well. And so we are, we're doing the steps that we can so that all of these options and scenarios could be pursued, should that agreement no longer continue with the hub.
Okay, okay. So you have really thought this through, it sounds like, that you haven't been making, you know, those contingency plans, because you know, the hub, nothing's happening there now, but I do know that, you know, there is always, we've always had these plans that somehow, someday. And so I'm sure that the school will be there long after the hub, whatever the changes will be. And so you know, they really do have to plan on that. And, you know, I really, I think a lot of your school, I mean, I've I've known about, ever since you've been in Assumption, and because of the foundation, we've been able to to help you along with some of the funding. And so I really do think this is really a good school, and it's good for the community. But I don't want it be to depend on the hub, you know, forever is probably not real realistic. So but from what you told me, it sounds to me like you are working on some planning there, and I'm just trying to think, where, the only other is that one next to you over there, where the Liang Chin is, I mean, maybe they have a few extra spots. I know across the street, the bank and everything, they don't really have any space, but, you know, I'm not over there like you are, so maybe you, you know, you know of some other places that you could, you know, eke out a few more parking spots. But that's a real big important part of any development is you've got to, because most people still do drive, you know. And so we do have to have that, and we have, we have certain requirements because the neighborhoods don't like when people from businesses start parking and they're on the streets and everything, so. Okay, well, it sounds like you have, you're thinking this through. And that's one thing that really, when I was going over all the documents, all the written materials, I put down here too many ifs, but it sounds like you are really addressing those ifs and working with that within the parameters of what you have to work with, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
This is Chair Kwam, and we should open the public hearing soon, but since this topic came up, I'm going to ask my question right now is you mentioned you looked at some adjacent property for parking as an option if needed be. Have you approached them and asked if that's, if they're interested in that?
Not, not yet, Chair Kwam. I think Commissioner Rosenberg hit the nail on the head with the Liang Chin. I get a, I can see that just about out my office window. It's pretty unparked most of the day while they're there, while we're in session. So that could be something that we we look towards now. That wouldn't be able to cover, I think, all of what we need. But not at the bank across the street, but the strip mall there. I don't know if there would be a possibility to do a combo with some spots there and potentially within the Liang Chin lot. But we have not pursued that as of yet. It's just kind of something that we're initially looking at as well.
Okay, I would have felt more comfortable if you had approached them, since this is, does have a lot of ifs, just approached any of them and see if that was even a possibility, since we're having this discussion tonight. And then you said structured parking is a kind of on your radar, but you're not doing structured parking now because it's not affordable, isn't that right? So why would it be affordable if the hub becomes all developed?
I think we're not doing structured parking now because we have an agreement that we actually already put in place with the hub for the expanded parking on their site. So immediately, there's a adjacent parcel in the hub that allowed for that expansion, and that, that's the immediate goal for the school and opportunity for the school for that expansion. And if need be, there's the ability to take on structured parking should that requirement need to be met. And I think that's, the school is prioritizing the currently available resource that it has and, and will invest in the structured parking if and when that becomes necessary.
I understand that. I thought I had read in the packet somewhere that it wasn't financially feasible to do that, but maybe I didn't read that.
Chair Kwam, you were maybe thinking about something in the packet that talks about adding additional floors being cost prohibitive to the storm shelter.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that. Okay, thank you. Is it okay if we open the public hearing? All right, I'll open the public hearing. The number to call in about this is 612-861-0651. Do we have any emails or voice messages prior to 2:00 PM today?
Chair Kwam, we did not.
Okay, and do we have any callers on hold for this issue?
Chair Kwam, there are none.
Okay, well, I'll wait again very briefly, 612-861-0651. Okay, I will make a motion to close our public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second, Rosenberg.
Thank you. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Melissa, would you take role?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely? Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So our public hearing is closed for this. So we can continue our questions or discussion on this item, commissioners. But ask, maybe the applicants could just hold back a little and wait for questions rather than jumping in right now so that commissioners can debate a little bit or discuss it, or ask questions. Anybody? Commissioner Sturza?
Thank you, Chair Kwam. My question is for city staff. I don't have, I wasn't on the commission when this was initially approved, so I'm looking for insight on either why staff or the commission or the city council felt comfortable with the lease agreement initially and didn't require the covenant that would typically be required in the, I think, 2018 approvals. Like, was there, is there any understanding of like why city staff or the city was comfortable with that arrangement initially?
Commissioner Sturza, I also wasn't here at that time. I, I would presume that it would be because the redevelopment at the hub maybe wasn't so on the front of people's minds at that time. Initial PUD approvals just oh, Ryan has me down.
So, and from what I put together in reviewing those materials, because I too wasn't wrong, there, the applicant at that time showed that there is ability to provide additional parking in the playground area, so that was taken as a reserve. So the requirement would have been a lot closer to being complied with had that future parking been improved. I, to my knowledge, I don't believe the lease was even a discussion. I think this was something that they worked on there and to make that just work a little bit better for their needs. So that's from what I gathered, the background on that.
And then can you clarify, city staff again? Is there, is like, the way it's written, if we were to approve it, if the lease agreement no longer provided the parking, if the hub is redeveloped, and they are unable to meet their parking by partnerships with other businesses nearby, and they choose not to build a ramp because it's cost prohibitive, what, can they do that? Like, is there any enforcement? Is it just? What would happen in a situation like that?
Commissioner Sturza, we don't have a way to enforce that necessarily. I think that the applicant knows that they want to find parking for their staff. We did have another planning case last year that involved an applicant who was required to build a parking garage. to build a parking garage and there was just no incentive for them to ever build it and it never got built. But I, but there's no, there's no way you could go back and say, well, now you have to build it because they're not, they wouldn't be applying for any land use approvals necessarily. I don't know if Ryan wants to add anything.
Yeah, I can add. I think, you know, the way that we could look to prevent an instance like that would just be with the way that conditions are worded. Something along the lines of that they would have to continue to produce their lease agreements every year to, to show that that's still on the right track. And in, in such a time that those end, then they would be obligated to, to move forward with one of their options, one of which being build the, the structured parking. And then, you know, if, if, if there is non-compliance with that, there are mechanisms to enforce on non-compliance with conditions of approval. But that, that's not, that's not a easy path, but that would be available with some condition wording on the conditions of approval.
And what would that look like? Like, how do you force compliance in a situation like that? I mean, I guess the only reason I ask these questions so deeply is I, I am concerned about the, the significance, like the, the number of parking spots that would be missing if this lease with the hub is terminated. Like this isn't just a few, this is significant. And there's a lot of what ifs at play without a lot of clear contingencies that I can read on a piece of paper that says this is what will happen. Like, not this, these are the options of what we might do, but like this is what will happen so that we don't create untenable situation.
Yeah, and you know, this is, staff struggled with the recommendation on this because it, it is a policy decision, you know, that the ordinance speaks to shared parking and that's to be done via covenant. So in this case, you know, conditional use permits can be revoked. So there is the ability for the city to take that action.
Thank you.
I didn't understand that last thing you said, Ryan. Permits can be revoked?
Yes, conditional use permits can be revoked by the city for non-compliance with conditions of approval.
Then Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yeah, is there any thing, like, if we don't approve this tonight, that we can say that if they can go back and have some very clear contingencies with those other parking lots? For the, you know, that's, like I said, I, I have on my notes here, too many ifs. I, I, I really want to, would like to see this go forward, but then the other hand, I don't want them, I don't want to be in, have them in a, in a tough spot that, I mean, they have to to have their approval revoked and, you know, hurt the school in any way. It's better to have really firm, like Chair Kwam said, to have those discussions and to have that some sort of a, of an agreement that those other parking options are out there for them. To depend solely on the hub when, I mean, everything with them is up in the air and I, I just don't, I would feel, I don't think we'd be doing our, the job as a planning commission to approve this with that type of of hanging over their head, that, that, you know, that contingency, like, I mean, to have that unknowing, you know, what's, what's going to happen? I, I, I just don't feel really comfortable with this. I think you've made some talk and have done some planning, but at, with what your Chair Kwam said, I would have felt more comfortable if you could have said, yeah, Liang Chin is willing to rent us thirty-five spaces. Or the hub across the street is willing to rent us twenty spaces and twenty over Liang Chin's. I mean, something like that, and then I would have probably felt, felt a little better. I don't really feel comfortable in approving this with this type, with this kind of vague notion, well, we may find someplace to go afterwards. I don't think it's, I don't think it's good for the school. I don't think it's certainly realistic for, for what could happen when we're at the hub. So it's, it's not, I just don't feel really positive about this right now.
This is Chair Kwam and I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Sturza and Rosenberg that there's, it's just too speculative. And no matter how we feel about the school, it's kind of our role to try to have good land, long-term land use planning that we can justify. But I think, you know, it could come back to us with just a little more flesh on the what ifs. So that we, we are more confident, even maybe after some time, we'll see if something's going to happen with the hub. That new building is relatively new still, so this is kind of a newer relationship. I don't want to slow down the growth of the school, but I, I just, I feel the conflict of what are, what we are tasked with and that's confident in land use and that we're providing what's needed.
Commissioner Keneely?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I have a question for my, my fellow commissioners, actually, if I may, and I, and I mean this respectfully. I'm curious why conversations about potential parking needs with neighbors that aren't, that aren't binding? Why would those conversations alleviate, alleviate your concerns? For, for the school, the, the hub agreement year by year is more binding than the conversation with a neighbor. So I, I just want to understand where you're coming from a little better.
I guess I just, I, Rosenberg, I just need a, a little more firm. Well, there hadn't even been any conversations from what, what I've been, sounds like what we've heard tonight. And I think if I would have, if I would have, have heard that there were more conversations, more definite, maybe not definite, but maybe something that they would, I would feel more comfortable about the, about the decision. And because the hub has, yeah, they've got a year-to-year agreement. And I agree with you, Commissioner Keneely, that that is much more stable than a handshake with Liang Chin's. Yeah, I agree. But also, the, that's a year-to-year. And think, we do know that the hub is up for redevelopment, you know, and that shoe's going to fall one of these days. And so then they would be left kind of, you know, outside looking in. So anyway, that's, that's just what, what, what I'm thinking. I just, like I said, I, my own personal notes, I put too many ifs. And I, yeah, if they can keep the contract going, if they can do that. And I understand the school is, it needs to improve, needs to enlarge. I get that. I know there's more and more kids there. And I know that's why they moved out of assumption to have their own space. But I think we do need some more, something a little more firm than what we have for those contingencies.
Chair Kwam, and that's a great question, Commissioner Keneely, because those wouldn't be guaranteed either, I guess. But they would give it a better, you know, would be likely that it could happen if they had approached Liang Chin or another one and were able to tell us, yes, they are sure, they are interested in that. Doesn't mean it would happen, but it's more likely that there would have been other options if we, we heard them to, you know, tell us those conversations were positive and that is an option at this point, so it's not guaranteed. So that's why I wish that had happened. And then I think I had a question for staff, what if, again, I could have read this wrong in the long packet, but I mean, if there is in the future a, a new owner or tenant there, I mean, that could be a problem if there isn't enough parking, if, you know, looking way ahead, making this property sellable. Is that true? Ryan?
Oh, yeah, from a standpoint is, I think where we're going with that comment would be that we wouldn't want a situation where you know, there was a, an addition approved, so more square footage to a building that could be, it could be used else for other reasons. We, we obviously would want partnership to stay as long as, as long as they need to, but things happen in the future. So we would, we want to want a situation where somebody else takes on the, the property and, you know, hub, hub subsequently redevelops and we're left with a a use or a, a building that, you know, couldn't reasonably accommodate a, some adaptive reuse for the building. Again, that's kind of a speculative question, certainly. But we just wanted to make the commission aware that kind of that's what we were thinking.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Keneely.
Come back. Thank you, Chair. And, and thank you, Susan and Chair Kwam for answering my questions. I understand where, where you're coming from a little better. I want to make sure I understand correctly the information in the packet and, and from staff that covered parking here is an option down the road if the lease with the hub can't go forward. And with, with that option here, I, I just want to state very plainly that it, it makes me really sad when parking is the reason why we can't make something work. This area is changing a lot. And if, if we can build in a mechanism, you know, for approval that covered parking is the solution when and if hub spots aren't available for lease, I want to know if, if we're comfortable with that.
Commissioner Keneely, I'll, I'll just answer. The development of a covered parking, like a structured parking ramp would just require a major amendment to the conditional use permit. So it's certainly possible and the applicant has looked into the beginning of, of maybe planning for that in the future. So it would require a land use approval, but it, it would be possible.
Thank you for, for responding. That's, that's where my head is at right now. Like I said, it's, it's tough to let parking to hang, to hang this up when this area is like blessed with abundant parking. And, and I appreciate your, your willingness to answer my questions.
Commissioner Sturza?
I echo Commissioner Keneely's comments that I hate to see parking prevent development in the city. Like that is just, I, I, I really believe, or like I, I concur. But I also feel like it's a fairness issue and that this is two, I think I read two thirds of the parking would be off-site in a spot that we all know and hope will be redeveloped. And it feels like we are not, we're delaying a responsible decision. It feels like we're, you know, fingers crossed, like, let's get the, this is a great situation right now, but let's make the difficult decisions when our, our hand is forced. And I don't think that's fair to the future council or the future commission that is going to have to review a really tough situation because who knows what the finances look like when a ramp might need to be built or who know, you know, like there, we don't know what that future holds for for this property, for the properties around it. I concur. I don't think that a handshake agreement with Liang would make me feel any better about this. It's a really tough situation because, I mean, they're, the school is doing great work and I would, as a community, these are the partners that we love to see. But the significance of two thirds of offsite parking possibly being gone relatively soon, long-term picture, that, that's, that's where I'm having a tough, where I'm coming from. And I'm having a tough time seeing me feeling good about making a decision that is delaying a difficult decision. That's where I'm coming.
This is Chair Kwam and parking is never a good topic. It seems it's, it's not interesting or innovative or anything, but I mean, it's just a reality right now. And even at Partnership Academy, ninety percent of the people drive there. That's just reality. And we can hope it will be different in the future, but there, I think they're getting a fifteen percent reduction on the required parking now. Is that right, staff? Five for bikes and ten for transit reduction?
Chair Kwam, they will have a ten percent reduction for, I hope I'm saying that right. A ten percent transit reduction. And then if they were to build additional bike parking, they could get the five additional percent reduction.
So what is their reduction now when we first came in? What reduc, were they just given the ten percent for transit?
Chair Kwam, yes, they, they have the ten percent, well, as part of the approval, they will have access to that ten percent reduction. And if they choose to build excess bike parking, they could have the five additional.
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion? You don't have to be for or against something to make a motion. Okay, this is Chair Kwam. I move. We recommend approval of the attached ordinance amending Richfield City Code regulations in the general business of mixed-use districts related. Oh, I'm sorry, wrong one.
Ask a question, a clarifying question?
Of course.
What would be the difference in the commission recommending approval and that vote failing versus recommending denial? Do we have to have different findings? Does it affect the applicant differently? Like, could you clarify that?
So, yeah, with a, with a recommendation of approval, the recommend, the, that should be made with a finding that the required criteria for P U D approval, C U P approval are all met. Whereas conversely, with a recommendation to deny, that should be accompanied by finding that basically those approval criteria are not met.
Did that answer your question? Commissioner Sturza?
So for an applicant, it makes no difference if they're, this is just splitting hairs, but if an approval fails, like there is no difference than if an approval is denied, or if we deny something.
So this is a recommendation to the city council who would ultimately have the final decision. So similar to the case in December, that was, if I recall correctly, that was a motion to approve and that motion failed. So that went to the city council with no recommendation.
And no findings for denial.
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Sturza, that's a really great question. I've never thought of that. And I, still a little unclear, I have to admit, but Okay, so is there, should I make a motion? Okay. I'll move to approve the proposed amended planned unit development, final development plan and conditional use permit. Allowing construction of a building addition to an elementary school at sixty-five hundred Nicollet Avenue South. Is there a second?
Commissioner Keneely, seconds. If, if I may make one short comment.
Yeah, discussion. Yeah, we can have a discussion now.
I, I, I share your concerns about all the what ifs and, and the contingencies here, but at the end of the day, I'm, I'm trying to make decisions based on the number of cars we want, not the number of cars we've got. So that's why I'm leaning towards approval.
Other discussion? All right, staff, could you take role?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Kwam. I'm sorry, Chair Kwam.
No.
Commissioner Keneely?
Hi.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
No.
Commissioner Sturza?
No.
The motion fails.
Okay. Thank you to the applicants for coming. I hope something is reworked and that you can come before us again. Um, really appreciate your, what you're doing there. All right, that closes that public hearing. We're on to our fourth public hearing. Uh, regarding, this is a public hearing regarding proposed changes to zoning regulations for firearm sales, repair and other related uses. Staff, could you read your report?
Yep. Just making sure I'm unmuted. Chair Kwam, this item is a zoning ordinance amendment, um, which has been in the works for over a year. Since spring of last year, the city approved a moratorium on new commercial sales involving firearms in order to allow additional time to study and reconsider the existing regulations. And then that moratorium was extended again this fall for another uh, six months. So during that time, staff conducted, um, extensive research and got feedback from policymakers on, during two work sessions. And the attached ordinance updating the firearm sales, repair and related uses, uh, was prepared for your consideration. So this section of the zoning ordinance has not been significantly updated in more than a dozen years. So the current efforts, the intention was to clarify the applicability of the regulations, um, and making sure that it's applicable to, um, all the uses involving firearms, not just, um, how it was narrowly worded before. And, uh, in light of that, we would also be addressing code ambigu, and big ambiguities. Uh, we would also look to add firearm sales, a cup fire, excuse me, an online firearm sales component to the ordinance. And lastly, the intent was to revisit the district permissions and the buffering distance between firearms uses and other uh, types of sensitive uses or facilities. So the proposed revisions would add the mixed-use communities, uh, sites to the conditionally permitted locations. It would increase the buffer from residential uses to a hundred feet from, excuse me, from a hundred feet to two hundred fifty feet uh, in, in conjunction with what are, some of our neighbors are doing with regard to that, a residential buffer. It would, uh, clarify that the buff, those residential buffers apply to both residentially used and zoned property as opposed to just how it is currently worded with zoned property. It would add parks to the list of protected uses from which the buffer distance is required, uh, which would be a three hundred foot buffer. It clarifies and updated the, and updates the terminology that defines the, those protected uses, uh, including licensed daycare, rather than just a daycare and governmentally occupied buildings as opposed to governmental buildings. So just making sure the terminology is, um, more, uh, adequately describes what it is that's being measured from. And then lastly, as I mentioned, there's, uh, a direct component in the proposed ordinance that would address internet-based and mail order sales, um, which would be prohibited generally, except when there's no display, no inspection, no or no physical transfer of firearms on the premise. So in reviewing the ordinance amendment, the city is considered to be acting in legislative capacity and as such, there's a wider level of discretion that's allowed. Uh, however, the ordinance must be reasonable and related to a legitimate government purpose. So the proposed rules will continue to allow firearms uses, uh, as per recommendation of the city attorney. And adoption of these new rules does not impact existing uses, uh, firearm sales uses who are allowed to continue indefinitely as they currently exist. However, the new rules could potentially limit expansions of said businesses as the new regulations would be applicable um, to the expanded areas. So following a public hearing, the planning commission is asked to make a recommendation to the city council on the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, any questions for staff? Okay, uh, I will open the public hearing on this topic. Um, did we have any emails or voicemails prior to the meeting, staff?
Chair Kwam?
Yeah.
Chair Kwam, we did not.
Okay, thanks. Um, do we have any callers on hold for this? It's six one two eight six one zero six five one, the same number. Any callers on hold, staff?
Chair Kwam, there are no callers.
All right, we'll wait a moment for callers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to Commissioner Sturza.
No, second.
Thank you. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? Melissa, would you take role?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kwam.
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed. Um, so now, any other questions or discussion from commissioners before we make a motion? This is Chair Kwam. This is a different kind of, uh, topic before us than we usually get. Um, but I, I really, I'm always in favor of, I, I like that the the code ambiguity is being cleaned up and tightened up and that also now online is such a big part of sales so that that's being addressed. So I think that's really like proactive fixing up the code, um, aside from what, you know, my opinion is on it, but so thanks for doing that. And also, aren't we going, like, we're going from one hundred feet to two hundred and fifty feet because we were pretty small compared to neighboring city, right?
From, yep, Chair Kwam, from our research, I think we're the only one at a hundred, hundred or, you know, in that vicinity. Most, most others are two hundred fifty feet and greater.
Okay. Questions or comments? All right, anyone want to make, yeah, Commissioner Sturza?
Yeah, I would just echo what you said, that I really appreciate the amount of work that staff, um, put into this product. I, uh, appreciate that, uh, excuse me, buffer is going to be more consistent with our neighboring cities. And I really appreciate that parks were added to the list. Um, it's, uh, and last, somebody else has other comments to make, I can make a motion. I'm ready for that. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to recommend approval of the attached ordinance ordinance amending Richfield City Code regulations in the general business and mixed-use districts related to uses involving firearms.
I will second.
Okay. Uh, any dis, uh, any discussion on the motion? Uh, all right, staff, could you please take roll call one more time?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kwam.
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
The motion passes.
All right, thank you. Okay, so that ends our four public hearings. Our, our next, under the public hearing heading, um, item is asks the planning commission to cancel a public hearing to consider a request for an amended planned unit development final development plan and conditional use permit to allow a micro brewery and brewery pub slash taproom at six four oh two Lindell Avenue South. Staff?
So late last year, uh, Benefactor Brewing submitted land use, uh, requests for a micro brewery and taproom at sixty-four oh two Lindell Avenue South. In conjunction with those requests, staff did, uh, schedule a public hearing. However, during, after that time, the applicant, uh, asked that, uh, the city pause or, uh, postpone consideration on the request so that they can have more time to work with their neighbors. Um, and that public hearing was conducted in December, then continued, uh, excuse me, conducted in January. Or, yeah, conducted in December, now it's January, so, um, that was continued to this meeting. So staff is recommending that the cup, public hearing be canceled. The applicant intends to resume consideration at the February twenty-eighth Planning Commission meeting. So a new public hearing will be scheduled and notices will be pu, uh, sent to neighbors within three hundred fifty feet and published in the paper. So again, uh, looking for cancellation of the public hearing.
Thank you. Uh, this is Chair Kwam, uh, I move that we cancel the said public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, Melissa, would you take role again?
Yes. Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely? Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing that next meeting. Um, so that brings us to liaison reports. But before though, we have those, I just wanted to make a comment and recognize Commissioner Rosenberg for this being her last planning commission meeting after nine years. And we're gonna miss you a lot. Um, she, uh, we've all benefited from your looking back at past projects and giving us some perspective and just want to thank you for, you know, you mentioned since nineteen eighty-eight, you've been on a commissioner committee or the council.
I started many years and I go, oh my God, uh, thirty-four years that I have been involved with, with city business, uh, commissions, uh, of course, on the council for a long time and uh, been involved with just about anything that came along that needed volunteer work. I, everything from garden tours. I did a garden tour for seventeen years. So, I mean, I've really been intimately involved with the commu, with the the staff and the community and I'm still involved with the League Women Voters, the Richfield Foundation, and also the Assistance League. And then I get a call or email from, um, Ne, um, I think it's Neil, I'm gonna say his name. And so I'm on a focus group tomorrow night, so I can't say no. I, I, you know, I have forty-seven years that we've lived here in Richfield and I feel like I have a lot of, of, uh, I still have a lot to give. I do enjoy working with, uh, city staff and with any, any, uh, commissions or people. I still get calls. I have people who still think I'm on the council. I mean, this has been, it's only been, you know, twelve years, but they, you know, it's hard to give that up. My, my phone number must still be in somebody's place. But anyway, uh, thank you. I've really enjoyed my time on the commission and, um, we'll be keeping an eye on all you guys and seeing what's going on. Of course, Catherine and I are good friends. We just, we're alley rats together. We live in the same alley. So we'll be seeing each other then quite a bit. But, um, anyways, it's been great. Had a good time.
Thanks, Susan.
Yeah, thank you.
Volunteer hours. Um, all right, well, we'll go to our liaison reports and, uh, first is city council. Commissioner Rosenberg, a report?
No report.
All right, Housing and Redevelopment Authority, any report?
No report.
Uh, Transportation Commission, report?
No report.
Okay, reports. Next, uh, we come to city planners' reports, please.
Chair Kwam, few things to get on the commission's radar. Uh, there is an upcoming work session, uh, I believe it's scheduled for uh, March eighth with the HRA city council and the planning commission to discuss uh, the parcels that we kind of dub the roundabout parcels, which are three, uh, four handful of parcels just to the south of the Portland sixty-six roundabout. Um, so there's a concept that, um, a developer has put forward and I think we'd also renew, um, or rediscuss the, and, and additional, so a couple, couple concepts discussed for that site. And then there is tentatively a work session scheduled in April to continue our discussion on the missing metal housing and low-density residential, um, zoning districts and for one, one thing, we'll be talking about the results of the, the visual preference survey that's, was distributed. So again, a reminder, if you haven't done that, please, please submit that by the end of the month here. And then, uh, we're also working on scheduling, uh, once we, um, in, in subsequent, when we have a better idea for the schedule, um, a session for commissioners to submit questions, anything, you know, related to their duties. Um, so, you know, we can discuss sort of responses to, to what you have, um, what you all are questioning. Um, and w, we intend to do that once we get the three new members of the planning commission and those are scheduled to be officially approved at tomorrow's, uh, city council meeting. So a few things to look forward to. That's what I got.
Thank you. I just blanked out. Okay, so like Ryan said, our February meeting is our annual meeting for the planning commission. So we'll welcome three new planning commissioners that were just appointed. Um, we'll review our bylaws. We will elect officers and we'll choose new liaison roles. Um, so consider if you want to be an officer, if you want to nominate someone, if you want someone to nominate, you ask them um, or be ready to be nominated. Um, and let's see. Any questions about that meeting or anything? All right. That's great. Okay, um, uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Susan, did you want to make that motion?
I, we adjourn.
All right, Commissioner Rosenberg moves and Commissioner, Commissioner Sturza seconds. Adjournment, any discussion? Thanks for everybody participating tonight. Um, Melissa, would you take role?
Yes. Chair Kwam?
Aye.
Commissioner Keneely?
Aye.
Commissioner Rosenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza?
Aye.
The motion passes.